Okay.
Six o'clock, Monday, November 4th, 2024, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council. Roll call.
Susan Sears.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Hines.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Sears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Hines.
Yes.
Why not? Item three, presentation from DART.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Wonky, and I'm proud to be the CEO at DART, which you all know as the Regional Transit Authority. As we get started tonight, I just want to say, you know, I recognize the fine lines we all have to draw as elected official, you have to draw as elected officials, and me as a leader of a public organization of ensuring that taxpayers are getting the best investment they can for their money and ensuring we have the balance to find. And I hope that you'll hear by the end of tonight, for those of you who haven't been part of the conversations lately, you'll be reassured that DART is providing the best possible investment we can with the resources your taxpayers contribute to our organization. As I get started too, just want to give a special thank you to Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Campbell, and Mayor Jones for all of the work and time they have been putting into DART, especially recently. I really appreciate the time and support. So, two things to consider as we get started with the conversation tonight is really a couple of facts. One, that regional transit is absolutely essential for economic development. We, as a region, cannot thrive and attract employees and employers without it. And two, when you think about transit, we provide 3.5 million trips a year. That's more than the airport, and the number one reason people are taking those trips is to get to work. So keeping those things in mind, tonight you'll hear a lot of what I focus on is the economic impact of transit. So we'll start with your return on investment to DART, talk about the current environment we find ourselves in, and then the next steps with Reimagine DART. So if we want to go to the first slide, you'll see here that this is really just that focus again on public transit being an economic driver. Nine out of 10 trips on DART are for people to make and spend money. And so we know without those 3.5 million trips that happen each year, our economy would not be the same. So you go to the next slide, you'll see here also that public transit is more than an economic development driver. It's also really essential to social equity and well-being. In fact, you can see here that the majority of our riders meet the poverty threshold, and 60% of them do not have a driver's license or a vehicle in their household. So really, our service right now is serving the most dependent people in our community who would not have other options to get to work appointments, shopping, and more without DART. At the next slide, just want to talk a little bit quickly about service in Windsor. Oh, sorry, skipped a slide. As we look at this one, just a reminder, public transit is really important as we look at competing. As we look at our neighbors, you know, Omaha has invested in Bus Rapid Transit and is in the middle of building a streetcar. We have neighbors to the east in Iowa who are testing out fare-free transit and having conversations about trains. Then I know the Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota, that area, has invested and gotten millions of federal dollars to invest in Bus Rapid Transit as well. So again, as we look at what's happening in our neighboring cities, if we want to compete, we have to continue to invest in public transit. So now, if I go to, I believe, the next slide is DART service in Windsor Heights. Again, core services, the local route three, local route 74, the express route. And as a reminder, express routes are just on weekdays during the peak commuting times, as well as paratransit, which is the service, door-to-door service for those who are unable to use fixed route due to a physical or cognitive impairment. Some of the other benefits of being a part of DART that you might not know quite as much about, but DART also has a van pool service that connects employers and employees in our region with employers and employees outside the region. So the van pool service is really a workforce connection. It is a key, a key driver throughout the economy because right now we are seeing a lot of increases, especially in manufacturers who are struggling to get workers. Again, as we look at immigrants to our country, others who are new and looking for jobs, that transportation barrier is there. So we have people who are coming from the Des Moines Core out into Pella, Marshalltown, and other areas in the rural. We also have rural workers who are coming in to the Core to work as well. Of course, emergency services, we often come to aid when there is a need for mass transportation, or a warming shelter, or anything else needed during an emergency. And of course, special events. You are probably most familiar with our state fare service, but I do want to remind everyone that tomorrow we are providing free rides to the polls for Election Day. Again, that comes back to our core purpose of getting people to those essential functions in their lives. So the next slide will show you a little bit of what has happened with ridership in Windsor Heights. And I will point out that all of your ridership, other than one route, the Route 74, all of the other routes are up significantly over last year. So currently, there have been almost 50,000 fixed route boardings within Windsor Heights, and nearly 40, 4,300 paratransit trips that have begun or ended in Windsor Heights. With paratransit, we are able to see more about the customers. So you can see here that we know nine of those paratransit folks using paratransit are residents, and the other 152 are coming from outside into your community. Probably no surprise to you to see some of the top locations here, Walmart and Sands Club, the Windsor Heights Lutheran Church, and some of the key intersections throughout the region as well. You can see here, oh, sorry if you don't mind going back, I just want to share a little bit of Lisa's story. Lisa is one of our writers, and again, she shares why transit is important to her, and access to public transportation means freedom for me, and it's an essential part of my life. For DART means access to shopping, work, and pretty much everything I need to get around town. Again, she's one of many, many writers who depend on this service. The next slide, I do want to acknowledge, as we move forward, I think we can go to the next one. Yep, we know there's been, DART's been in the news a lot lately. There's a lot of conversations happening. With that, I just want to go back and to share just a little bit of history that some of these conversations are not new, and there's a lot we have been doing over the, over the years to try and be responsive to concerns. If you look back, the commission, the governance on the commission was reconstituted in 2017 to address concerns from some of our member communities who didn't have representation, continuous representation on the commission. After that, we undertook a new property tax formula that better aims to align how much a community's taxpayers contribute with the level of service they receive. We are right in the middle of that implementation, and you know that is where there's kind of crux of disagreement between some of our member cities. We have also diversified our fleet, increased the number of 30-foot vehicles, and we have some new on-demand vehicles that are being used for paratransit and DART on-demand, smaller vehicles, and other pilots and innovation as well. So again, even though some of these conversations continue on, there's been a lot of work done to address that. So if you go to the next slide, I also, this slide talks just a little bit about the property tax formula, which I think most of you, many of you are familiar with. As a reminder, when we get to the end of this new formula, again, we're about halfway through it, it should be that Des Moines is paying 49.2%. And then the other members pay a mix of population, 50% population, 50% part of the service tier they're in. And so you will see that Windsor Heights is one of four communities that receives seven-day-a-week service. And so your tier actually ends up being a compilation of tier three, four, and five, because you also have the services in four and five. So it gets grouped, grouped together. As, as I know you know as well, we are at the cap for a resident in Windsor Heights, and so right now residents are paying 95 cents on the thousand, which equals about $88 on a $200,000 home. And also appreciate, and again, appreciate the council's commitment to transit. I know you have had to allocate money from the general budget above and beyond, and I know there's, that is anticipated more in the future. And again, appreciate and understand that's, that's a commitment from your community, and we're grateful for that. At the same time, on the next slide, I want you to know again that we are doing what we can to ensure that we're providing efficient and effective service for you. This measurement you see on the left, left, is a common one in transit that's called bus operating cost per actual vehicle revenue mile. And so we just like to use lots of words, but this is anonymized information from other transit agencies. And you can see there that as, as a whole, the transit, we are, sorry, lost my train of thought there, DART is at $8.52 for that cost, where the average across the industry is around $12. So again, that is one of many metrics that we look at on a regular basis to make sure that we are doing what we can to be efficient as it relates to other transit agencies. In addition, this last year, as several of you know, we cut support positions, eliminated Wi-Fi, and reduced customer service hours. None of those were easy decisions, and they have had impacts on customers and staff. But we really want to make sure we're focusing everything we can on the service on the road, and looking for anywhere that we can run a more efficient business. And that is something that we did the last year to, to try and move the needle on that. So as we look to the future of DART on the next slide, we have had lots of conversations, like I've said, and really appreciate many of you, if not all of you, took time to fill out a survey from our member communities earlier this summer. And then there have been interviews with member communities, and now we've been going through facilitated workshops. And I will tell you, you know, a couple, two things are the same amongst all the responses. Transit is essential, we've got to figure it out, and you got to figure out how to live within your means. Both things I personally am committed to as the leader of DART. The challenge for us gets to be, in everything else, there are very different answers. So if you go to the next slide, you can see here, this was just an example of some hypothetical networks in terms of types of networks and service that we could provide. And you can see here that amongst our, our member elected officials, it was almost evenly divided between the three types of networks. And so it is going to be a lot of work for the commission and our member communities over the next year to get to agreement. But we know that that consensus is really important to us being successful. Because if we want to get out of some of the hamster wheel we're on of communities having conversations about withdrawing, making sure that taxpayers are getting their most, best of their investment, we need to make sure we have clear goals. We can't beat everything to everybody. And that is really what the next year will be all about with our Reimagine DART process. So if you go to the next slide, that process, again, we are focused really heavily on the transit system redesign, which you'll see as a middle here. But we're starting with the regional buy-in around shared goals, then taking those shared goals that we're working toward and starting to redesign a network around it. And the goal of this is that we be unconstrained by anything historically. We know that DART was formed nearly 20 years ago out of the MTA. A lot's changed in 20 years. Windsor Heights looks different. Many of our suburbs have their own downtowns. The ways people are traveling between our suburbs are different. COVID has affected work patterns. So we want to take that step back and say, with the goals that the commission agrees to, then this is what we can do with X, Y, and Z amounts of money, right? We, we will learn to, we will deliver transit within the boundaries of the budget that the commission and our elected officials give us. Certainly throughout the next year, public input and engagement will be really important, and that'll be an area in where we really want Windsor Heights at the table, both continuing as a member of DART, but also ensuring you and your residents, your chamber, and others are very actively involved, because this public, this new system will be reflective of what the community says it wants for the future. I think that that, and this is the timeframe of what we'll be going through. Again, in the spring, we'll be collecting feedback on the transit priorities and some of the options that the public has. We'll be collecting feedback on a draft network, making several votes along the way. But by next December, our hope is to have agreement on a final service plan so that we can implement, begin implementation of it in July 27 with our fiscal year 27 budget. So again, a lot to go through there. And so now I think I'm to my closing slide, if I'm remembering right. So what I hope you really take away from tonight is just a reminder that DART and our staff are really committed to providing an efficient and effective regional transportation service. That regional transit is the most effective way, cost-effective way to provide public transit. Just as one example, before all of our capital costs, we get $8 in federal funding for $2 in local, every local dollar, or every local contribution. We also get several million in operating each year from the federal government. That regionalism and that effort in doing this together are how we make public transit work. Just like key other infrastructure, public transit does need support and investment from the public. That is how we make it work. But again, we will be taking this step back this next year to ensure that the, we are looking at the system and finding every way we can to provide the best possible service to meet the needs of our community, and ensuring we're thinking creatively about what does our community need 20 years from now. So with that, again, thank you for the ongoing support, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions from council?
Amanda, one of the... One of the, thank you for coming, by the way. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
One of the realities of this is that I hear from so many people is that because I don't use DART, why should somebody else need the service? Is that what you're hearing from some leaders in some of the communities?
Certainly, I think that's always a challenge in, in public transit, but also, as you know, with other amenities as well. Some things we take for granted. We don't worry as, think so much about, you know, I don't call the fire department most of the time, but the one time I do, I want them to be there, right? And again, not comparing, but same with our parks. Not everybody uses our parks, not everybody uses our trails, but they're essential for our community, be a place that people want to live and work. And same with public transit, is it might not be you that's using it or needing it, but it might be your nurse, it might be your barista at Starbucks, and so on and so forth. And I can tell you from the number of stops at Walmart and other places in your community that it is essential to our economy, even if you don't use it.
It really is. And just as a final comment, I have spoken with Council, Councilman Jones often about this being really about economics. And the reality is, is that you're absolutely right, that for people to go to work and then build on what is 70% of our GDP, which is consumer spending, so very important that we have a reliable public transit system. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So Amanda, a couple of questions. Again, thanks for being here. Can you talk a little bit about, I, do you guys still provide transportation for Des Moines area public schools? Is that still something that you do as well?
Yes, yes, we do provide transportation for Des Moines public schools. In fact, our workshop last Monday with the commission, we walked through how that service is governed and funded, and tried to show the information that shows that essentially, it's a break-even service that's both good for the community and the region, but also we're not, DMPS isn't getting some great deal, and we're not getting some great deal. They're paying a contract of about $1 million a year for the services we're providing them.
Okay.
Happy to share those PowerPoint slides or any other details.
Nope, that's the other question that I had, because I know that the caravan has been in place for a really long time, and I know that that was started, I mean, and that's, my question is, how long has that been going on? Because I just remember it.
That is a great question. I, at least 20 years. I mean, well, ahead, it began when DART was MTA. And so I know ahead of that, I remember my first or second year at DART, we celebrated its 20th anniversary. So I think we're nearing 30 years of having the caravan program. The program has faced some challenges in the last couple of years because it really was meant as a way originally of getting our rural folks into Des Moines. And with COVID and a lot of the retirements and things that have happened since, that isn't where the needs are. We are having conversations and work with some major employers, one of which we used to work with was TPI, when that went under and had to shift, shift, and I forget exactly the details, but they're no longer using vans, but now they're having conversation with us about coming back and using a bunch again. And so we have a two-year trajectory we're working through with the commission in order to get that program back to a break-even. I'm really hopeful it will, but that's essential for that program to thrive. And yeah, we, we know that is one that needs to be a break-even program for our community, and we're working to get back to that point.
And what's, I know one of the, I mean, Joseph and Lauren do an amazing job keeping us updated on the DART activities. But so the on-demand program has been something that's up and coming, and how, so a little bit more about how that, the success of that is going, or do we, do we, do you get a lot of requests from Windsor Heights residents for that? Do you, is it utilized in our community? Is there anything you can share in that space?
Yeah, and DART on demand, you don't have in your community, so it isn't, isn't utilized. DART on demand is the name for what we, is called as an industry micro-transit, which is essentially as close to Uber or Lyft as you can get, where you reserve your trip. It is a smaller vehicle that comes and picks you up. And there's usually a zone in which you can travel. We have done three pilots of DART on demand, one in Ankeny, one in the Riverbend area of Des Moines, and one in West Des Moines. The pilot in Ankeny has gone extremely well. One of the challenges of micro-transit going well is because it is a point-to-point service, you can only carry so many people. So as a whole, micro-transit, you can only carry three to four passengers an hour. When you start to surpass that, in order for the service to be sustainable, you have to add a vehicle and a driver. And so the cost of it gets up there. So we are at our max of four vehicles on the Ankeny service. We cannot add any more vehicles at this point without additional revenue to fund that. In a different way, the Riverbend and Jordan Creek pilots did not go so well. And the Riverbend one has been discontinued. Some of the feedback we heard, and we're working on some more thorough research, was for a lot of residents, just knowing that a bus is coming every 20 minutes or 30 minutes, or whatever the frequency is, is easier for them than trying to schedule each of their trips, than trying to see, am I going to be one of the people who gets in, and is it going to be in the half-hour window I need? It creates more unknowns for them, and so a lot of folks do prefer fixed route. So micro-transit certainly has a place. It's in the right place at the right time, and it's knowing that the more successful it is, the more it costs.
Okay, I was curious about that.
And that will certainly be a part of the conversation we'll be having with our transit system redesign, is the role of micro-transit in the system. I have not heard of getting many requests from Windsor Heights residents. I do think because you have pretty robust fixed route service, but some of the suburbs, we get more requests from the suburbs who don't have as robust a fixed route service.
Awesome, thank you. Well, again, good work. Keep, keep it up. And I know that, for example, the Windsor Heights Lutheran Church folks may not understand the connection there, but there, they have a day program there for individuals with disabilities, and a lot, I work with a lot of those folks. And I think one of the things consistently that we've heard is without the DART transportation, not only would that program not exist for those people, but those people would then be, have, you know, not have any choice but to stay home or stay where they are. So I know how important that is for that community in particular. So thanks.
Yes. And as we look, our population is aging, as I think we all know, but I believe it's between now and 2035. 2035 is when the number of 65-year-olds and older will outnumber the number of folks 18-year and younger. So the demand and need for that paratransit service is only increasing, which is one of the challenges and opportunities that we face as we look at the future of DART, and we'll be talking about with the commission as we look through Reimagine DART.
Fantastic. Thanks again.
And thank you for being here, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership through this time. I think you'll be hard-pressed to find an elected body more supportive of public transit and DART. Adam, can you go back one slide? So, looking at this, is this sort of the timeframe that you, I guess, DART is hoping to follow with Reimagine DART?
It is the timeframe, and it is because we current, for several reasons. One, we know there's a desire to get some of these changes made sooner rather than later. So we want to act as quickly as we can while being very thoughtful, because these are major changes right there, infrastructure changes for our community. Currently, we have a budget that gives us funding stability for two years through FY26. And so the goal is to have the commission be able to vote on this network so that member communities can feel supportive of the system and thereby continue to fund the system into the long term. And that's really why that December timeline is there. Our consultants have told us that they can make the timeline. The biggest challenge they always run into is the number of decisions that have to be made by staff and elected officials through the process is a lot. And, and I think we're beginning to see that in conversations we're having about the budget scenarios, about who we include in the, what member communities we include, you know, if a member is withdrawing, do they get included? There's all sorts of if this, then this. But long answer, yes, December is the goal, with implementation beginning, and no system changes overnight. It's not going to all happen at once, but implementation beginning in July of 27, or 26, FY27.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
All right, item four, public forum. This is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Of the comment. Hearing none. Consent agenda.
Promoted. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Sears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Hines.
Yes.
Six A, Consider Resolution Number 202466, a resolution waiving CEC fees for a recurring free-will donation community yoga class.
Second.
Nate is not here, so.
Nate is online for any questions as well. A quick summary is, prior to COVID, there was a very active group doing yoga in the early mornings at the Community Events Center. I think COVID maybe slowed that down for a while, but the group is ready to bring that back. We had a conversation at the Special Events Committee a couple of weeks ago. They were supportive of waiving the fees for that to begin again, provided us some good feedback that's incorporated in the resolution as far as if we needed to cancel due to an alternative event, cleaning, looked at the liability language in our waivers. But we do have Ben and Beth, I believe, here tonight, if you want to provide some additional information on that. Otherwise, that's for consideration, to waive the fees for one year so that they can get that program up and running again.
Come on up.
I'm excited to see you, Bebette.
I'm Beth Gukin, and I'm here representing Ben. He had a prior engagement tonight, so he apologized for not being able to be here. So I can answer any questions. We, I know that we're probably, I don't know, four year, four years, we practiced at Windsor Heights in the morning, 6:00 AM. I think we opened at 5:45, and then by 7:15, 7:30 in the morning, people were all out. Ben had the combination or what the keypad, so he was able to get in. And we, we would clean up after, we would reset the, the tables and chairs as needed. And it's a, it's a great opportunity for the community to come in. We had a lot of participation. It's donation-based, so if you can pay a buck, you pay a buck. If you could pay 10 bucks, you pay 10 bucks, right, for a class. So it doesn't limit people to signing up for, you know, $100 or $200 a month program, right? So it makes it available for everybody at every level of ability to participate. So, and it, and it builds a strong community, and I can speak for that personally. So, do you have any questions specifically?
Can you explain where the donations go that you received? I know you talked about that at the Special Events Meeting, but just kind of give a, an overview on, on that for everybody else to hear.
For sure. So some of it obviously goes to our instructor, Ben, for, for teaching the class, and, and whatever that is. Again, he wanted that to be whatever people were able to, to pay. But I can also tell you that each Sunday for the last, since 2020, for sure, 2019, the money also goes to a community meal. We would do outreach at Sixth and College. So anybody in the neighborhood who needed a meal, the people in the yoga community would come together with donations, bring them to that, to that location. We would package them and hand them out. So even today, the, the location that they used for that is, is not available, but there's a small group that goes and provides probably 30 meals or 40 meals to folks who are gathered at the Urban Dreams, also at like Seventh and Clark, I think is where that is. And they are homeless, and they don't have necessarily other means. So, so again, meals are packaged and provided to, to those folks as well. So sometimes it funds community-based events. So there've been like little yoga in the past, or yoga on the farm events in the past. So just different community events as well as where some of that money goes to.
Other questions?
In the past, how many folks participated on average? Do you?
Yeah. So, you know, in the 6:00 AM class, there could be anywhere from probably a strong 15 in the morning, sometimes 25 or better. There were times when he used the space on Wednesday evenings, and we would fill the whole space, and it would be almost mat-to-mat. So there were, you know, I don't know if there were 75 people in there. Sometimes yoga in the park right outside at Colby Park. There were sessions as well. And again, that would fill up a pretty great space. So 6:00 AM is a little less popular of a time, but for sure, I would say at least anywhere 15 to 25 people. So, yeah. It's a good following. Hi, Mika.
Yes.
All right. Any final questions or discussion?
I think at our special events meeting, a lot of our discussion was making sure that this wasn't putting additional work on anyone. And Nate and Adam agreed that this wouldn't, and then have updated the hold-hardenless agreement. So I think that Ben has a great record in, you know, being respectful of the space. So that really alleviates the extra stress on our city staff. So I think it's a great idea.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call.
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes. Yes.
Six B, discussion of Bridges of Iowa Colby Park Bridge Concept.
About a month ago, some staff reached out from Bridges of Iowa about an artist-designed bridge that they were interested in constructing someplace in the metro to celebrate their anniversary of their organization's work. So we met at Colby Park and looked at a couple of places. One in particular, kind of between the parking lot and the old Bioswale there is a potential opportunity for that installation. And I think Jamie and Pat are here tonight. If they want to get a little background on the organization and what the bridge might look like. The intent today is just to have a little bit of discussion, receive some information. We have some infrastructure projects that would potentially be underneath that bridge and around that bridge that we'd be looking at as part of our budgetary discussion here going forward. And so I want to see if council's supportive of the concept, and then staff can continue to work on kind of those budgetary conversations and with Bridges of Iowa kind of leading up to our December discussions to see if we can make everything aligned and potentially move forward.
Well, thank you for having us. My name's Jamie Bilt, and I have been working with Bridges of Iowa since 2018. And in 2025, Bridges of Iowa will celebrate 25 years. And in case you don't know, Bridges of Iowa is an addiction treatment program. We are housed in the west wing of the Polk County Jail. However, our clients are not incarcerated. This is a, but most of our clients do come, not all, but most do come through the legal system. Our program is CARF-certified, which is just a bunch of numbers or letters, but it's very important in our business. We are, we have alumni over our 25 years. Our alumni number would be larger than 853 of the cities in Iowa. And again, the important thing about our program is it's a year-long. So we are taking people through every season to help them get into, to help them recover, to help them lead a healthy, productive life. As we were looking for what we could do to celebrate our 25th anniversary, we came up with this idea of public art. And we were very lucky to find an artist, Amy Putney Kona. You all have seen her murals and her artwork all over. You can buy her artwork at the Lidget Gallery, as well as other places. She is now a published author. Oh, by the way, a big mistake here. I needed to introduce Jeff Lambertie. Jeff Lambertie is the son of Don and Charlene Lambertie, who actually founded Bridges of Iowa, and have been longtime supporters. And at one point, we're the financial supporter of the program. So anyway, so we had an artist, we had an idea, and we had everything but a location. And we met this woman named Georgie Libby. I don't know if she's related to anybody here, by the way. And she's like, well, why wouldn't you think about Colby Park? I was like, oh, sure, sure, yeah, Colby Park. I hadn't been to Colby Park in 20 years when I went. And so I'm like, okay, yeah, well, I'll put together a little thing on these locations. And Colby Park is fantastic. And it is the location that we would love to have if you would have us. And so I guess what this meeting is about is for you to learn a little bit about us, what we intend to do. The bridge is a very important part of our program, of our graduations. Our graduates, after they've spent their year or more, getting clean and sober, getting employed, reconnecting with family, getting custody of children, if that's what's going on, getting back to work. They ceremoniously cross the bridge. And it is an incredibly, I am getting teary-eyed about it even now, because it is, when you see it, it just sends chills down your spine. It's a, and so the bridge is going to be the canvas for Ms. Putney Koning to.
A solid bridge in your park, in your area. I realize it could be sounding like this heavy, heavy concept and heavy thing to be celebrating, but the intention of it is to, to be somewhat interactive and beautiful and informative, a place for community members to participate in at Colby Park. I love Colby Park. I've always loved Colby Park and been classes. I did the interior of Good Vibes Yoga a long time ago. And but also a place with, I mean, I feel like maybe levity is a word, where people can go and acknowledge. Like, when you get sobriety, when it's been really difficult, it's become something that's such a gift and that you can be really proud of. And I see it being fun and interactive, but not like blasting in your face that this is about recovery. You have to look closer and see the recovery element and the informative element. But it could be an inviting place. I love the idea of incorporating the nature in that little parking lot that it's not. And it could be really interesting. I don't mean to run my mouth about it. But I think what they do is really important work. And part of what I think is really important is sort of normalizing recovery and sobriety and the gifts that it is, rather than hiding from it or making it anything other than this Super Bowl thing. And so I painted a lot, thought about bringing like a slideshow, but I can tell you that D-Mark and the Metro Waste Recycling Facility is a huge mural that outside of the Des Moines Market Isle, all the big acai bowls and power life yoga. But what I don't want it to feel like is that it has to look like all of those. Because sometimes when you do a lot of work for people, people want work to look the same as the other work. And sometimes we want something to be a little more unique and different and fitting to the cause. So we're kind of in this space of working with where it's going to land and then the design development and that kind of thing.
And if you've seen Amy's work, her work tells a story. There's stories embedded into bright colors. And our message is, I mean, anybody who's suffered with addiction or had somebody they know suffer with addiction knows it is hell on earth. But the great thing is, is when that person can actually get help, get treatment, get into recovery, then there's joy. And as that bridge opens up to all of the really fantastic work, sorry, that you have done with the playground and the splash pads and stuff. And it will be colorful, and it'll be inviting. It will be welcoming. It will not be something where it's not meant to be heavy. And I'll let Jeff talk now.
I'll try to be brief, because Jamie actually said pretty much everything I would. As she mentioned, my parents started bridges in 2000, kind of like most families in Iowa, somewhere you're touched by addiction, right? And if you're lucky enough to be a family that's not been affected by addiction, you're really lucky. And of course, my family was, and that's why my parents started it. And Jamie talked about originally, they funded it, and they funded it because they weren't going to let somebody diminish the effectiveness of the program. You cannot fix addiction in 30 days or 45 days. You fix it through a long-term program. And we've had 25 years or 24 years of success. We've helped thousands of people. And when you see what happens over the course of that year, it's pretty amazing. And actually, we do graduations every other month, and they're open to the public. So if you'd like to come check it out, they're very uplifting. And it's often not the person who's graduating. It's the one or two family members that are stuck with them, because that's really, really hard, right? It's almost always the mother. Mother sticks with them, often the kids. And they've got their life back. They've got their parent back. It's really rewarding. And so 25 years, we're thinking, what do we want to do? We want to celebrate that success. And this is all about positive, the positive results that we've had. And at the same time, if people need help, we want them to be aware of us. We've been around 24 years. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be around a long time. We also want you to know that. We're not some fly-by-night organization. I've been chairing it, I don't know, three years or so, because my folks are, my dad's turning 87, my mom's 84. And we had to figure out a way to make sure this program was going to be around a long, long time. And we've done that through a lot of hard work of making sure that we're a stable organization, and we're looking forward to it. And if you ever get a chance, we do do open houses where you can come see what we do at the jail. This is probably one of the most unique arrangements, not just in America, in the world, where we are actually housed in an unoccupied, previously unoccupied wing of the Polk County Jail. We pay a dollar rent to them. It's not, you're not locked down, as Jamie said. You can leave at any time. And we take people, we save Polk County residents all kinds of money because we move them from the jail to our program. And then we turn them into, back into productive citizens, where they're paying taxes, they're paying their obligations. In fact, the sheriff asked to film a couple of years ago, and we assisted with him because he was presenting to an international conference of sheriffs about how unique our program is. But it's important, we don't just serve people who are coming from the jail. We'll serve anybody, but that's a population that we can do a lot of good with. So I better, I said I was going to be short, and I'm not. But we'd love to answer any questions you have. More than anything, we wanted you to know who we are, that you can find us, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, thank you both for being here. I have a little inside track on some of this. One of the things, and I've been to a graduation before, and I was also, when you were on Vine Street, I was there for, helped prepare the Thanksgiving meal at that event. And one of the very curious things is, is the wide difference of people that you're serving. That night, I happened to meet a woman who is a CPA. I thought she was there on behalf of somebody that was in the program, but she was in the program. And likewise, I met another person who's been there three times. What you folks do is really remarkable, and kudos to your parents. Question, you're currently meeting off-site for the graduation ceremony. Would you also be using the CEC, the Community Center?
We would love to.
We would love to. Yeah, we would love to. It seems like it would make a lot of sense, right, to do our graduations there?
Sure.
They're on Thursdays.
And they're, they're just very uplifting. Our alumni group formed on their own. It wasn't us forming it, and they show up, they have, they do their own events. We try to help them and support them when we can. But they started themselves, and they come to these graduations to show support. And you're right, we, the age group are all over in terms of who we serve. And I don't know, we just, we do good work.
Being a part of places like this, to be able to have events, that elevation all fits, because I can understand and wonder how it fits in here. And I think that can make it really remarkable.
I would agree. So just a couple additional logistical kind of questions that we're working through as a staff. So obviously, we have a wonderful park, as you can kind of walk across this conceptual bridge and see, and potentially a community center to use as well. The parking lot is starting to become in rough-shape construction. This last year has done a bit of a number on it. It's not currently in our CIP to be resurfaced, but it is something that we're talking about at the staff level about adding into the CIP. We don't have a recommended date at this point. We just know that the anniversary here is coming up next year. So I think the goal would be to potentially get the bridge in sooner rather than later. And I think that could be done with the existing parking lot. Aesthetically, it may not be ideal, but that's something that'll be in front of you in the next month or so is consideration of that CIP and where that resurfacing, the parking lot, will fall into that. And then the second piece is the Bioswale that's underneath the bridge. You can see in the rendering there as well. That at one point was kind of a prairie and some shrubs in there. It's fallen into disrepair as well. So that has been on our topic conversations at staff level, as well as using the stormwater fee to restore that into something that can be sustained longer term and be a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than the mode sort of surface that you have today. So that'll be a lesser expense. We don't have a price on that one yet, but the resurfacing is a substantial expense at maybe around $200,000 or so. So two pieces will be in the budgetary conversation. Wanted to make sure that you're aware of those coming up here in the CIP and make sure our potential partner here, if council's interested in proceeding with that relationship, is aware that it'll be discussed, but at this point, we don't have a definitive answer of when those two projects might be undertaken. So again, at this point, really just looking for some feedback, whether you're interested in continuing to look at this as an option in Colby Park. And then we'll kind of work through conversations about timelines and how that planning can come to fruition.
Well, I would just add, I think that this fits with our goals with public art that we have, and we have a public art plan coming. So, and I know that has, that's been made aware. So it's consistent with that, obviously very unique to Windsor Heights. And what better place to have a bridge than in the heart of the metro? So.
And I, you probably may be aware, but if you're not, obviously, the cost of doing this from the perspective of the actual art and all of that is on us. We've already committed to that. Our board's already on board with all of that. So.
And just to underscore, you know, for 25th anniversaries, a lot of times, it's easy for nonprofits to go, oh, we'll have a gala, or, you know, we'll have an event of some sort, which is great, and I love those events myself. However.
I don't.
Jeff doesn't like those events, no. But it's a fleeting moment that you have. You work a really long time to pull one of those off. And it's, and this would not be fleeting. It would be there for years, we hope. And we had outlined some things, and I think you all have that. But, you know, we understand that part of that would be maintaining it, and we would be doing that for an agreed-upon period, whatever that is.
And you would understand, being in politics, after spending 12 years in politics myself, I've had enough chicken dinners for a lifetime. So that's why I'm not all that keen. But, and that one component is awareness. I mean, because where we do operate, and we don't operate at Vine Street anymore.
That was a nice location, though.
It was. And actually, if it wasn't for the "not in my backyard" problem, right? We'd still, we would have been there. But that's okay. We do great work, and we're still there available for people who aren't in the criminal justice system. And we're actually talking about things in the future that will make that even better. You know, so that kind of is what it is. But. You know, so that, that kind of is what it is, but um we're uh, I don't even remember where I was going with that, I lost my train of thought, but.
Um, well, if I could leave you with one thing is when we, we've talked about these graduations and, and Jeff is right, it's usually a mom that says something that just makes you, you know, clutch. However, my favorite graduation is a young girl who was like fifteen or sixteen in high school, she was an athlete. She um stood up and said, I'm really happy that my dad made it through bridges. I'm really happy to have him back because now he can come to my sporting events and I never have to worry about seeing his, and, and I, I never have to worry about seeing his mug shot online again.
My point was awareness, helping, because people often don't know about us. And instead of people going through failed programs, things that aren't helping them, which lots of people have been through multiple programs before they get to us. W- we have a twenty-four-year record of really high success. So people that can walk across that bridge and learn more about who we are, maybe pick up the phone and call. Um, we think that's really important long-term.
It, it is, oh, and just so you know, uh, two other things that I meant to talk about is um, the people think that people who are, that, that are, we've always had our client base as not, has not necessarily been um, an opioid client base. However, in the past two to three years, we have discovered that opioids, either primary or secondary, are now forty-four point six percent of the people who are coming through bridges. And like I said, about ninety percent of the people who come through bridges have, are in the, have, have been arrested and uh, they're in the legal, they're, they're in the legal system, judicial system.
For my day job, um, as a public defender, um, I'd say about, I don't know, eighty percent of my clients have substance abuse issues. Uh, and if they go to inpatient treatment, most of them, I would say, go to twenty-eight day programs like CFR. Sometimes prayer ridge. I see a lot of those people back, but the ones that go to bridges, I typically don't see back. Um, so I think that's sort of a testament to the work that you do um, recidivism.
Well, and what I would tell you, we don't criticize the other programs for what they do because they do what they do within the funding that's available. And so more would do long-term treatment if the funding was available and believe me, we spent a lot of time up at the Capitol talking about our long-term dream of making that happen. And so we know they're dealing with what it, what it is, and I'm convinced, though, others would, if we could get the funding, they would lengthen their program and become uh more effective. We have the benefit first that my parents were willing to put a lot of money into this over the years and just fund it because they wanted the result. And then we figured out a way through hard work, raising our own money, the support we have of um the jail, the sheriff, Polk County, and then raising our own money, we feel like that's our responsibility as well. You know, if we're going to do this program, we're going to raise our own money as well. And so we've been able to keep that integrity of the program. It's not brain surgery, right? I mean, it really isn't. Uh, you got to break that cycle and you're not going to do it in twenty-eight days. Well, some people, yes, very few.
Do you happen to have uh recidivism rates, like um, in my past life, I worked for the Department of Corrections. So this is something that I am completely uh understanding and, and aware of. Just wondering if you had any type of rates as to if you kept track of um, how many people have come through? And unfortunately, the ones that may need a refresher course or a re-thinker or however you want.
We do, and I wish our executive director, our CEO, Pat was here, but he's ill because he could get, and we do, we can get you all of that. You know, we face the same challenge a lot of times, I mean, we, we, after they leave our program, we continue to gather data only to the extent that people are willing to share. So it's not perfect, but we, we generally state that our success rate is above seventy percent in what we've.
For long-term.
For long-term.
For the, you know, we, we know what, we know the people who, who do answer our requests, what they tell us, if they're five years out and more. And it, it's actually, it's impressive. It's not ninety-five percent though, or a hundred percent, because I don't know how you get there, but. Um, I will say that a lot of the people who, who did relapse, who come back through, didn't necess- didn't, a, a lot of them did not go back to jail as a result. They, they have their coin, we give everybody a coin at graduation and they came back with their coin and they went back through the program.
Does the coin have a bridge?
It does not, it has, it has our logo on it and the sovereignty prayer.
Maybe that'll be your twenty-fifth anniversary.
It will be silver, I know that.
All right, um, so I am hearing support for this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, gave us way more time than we deserve, but we appreciate it, thank you.
Good to have you.
Thank you.
All right. Six C, consideration of resolution number twenty-two-four sixty-five, a resolution approving the site plan for sixty-three oh one University Avenue Windsor Presbyterian Church parking lot.
Salute.
Trey.
Hello, everybody, everybody, anybody that doesn't know me, uh, I'm Trey Rouse, I'm the acting city planner for City Windsor Heights. So we're going to go through um, staff report for Windsor Presbyterian Church parking lot expansion, sixty-three oh one University Avenue. Um, the applicant Shane Devick, uh, property owner Windsor Presbyterian Church, current use of civic organization within the zoning district, urban center, and then location. Uh, current existing conditions on the property, uh, sixty-three oh one University Ave, point six-six acre lot. Um, currently eleven thousand four hundred and sixty square foot contiguous building with eleven angled parking spots, three of them being handicap accessible and one parallel parking spot, sidewalks to access to all entrances um, surrounding the building. Uh, and then the three properties, twelve fourteen University Avenue, twelve twenty University Avenue and twelve twenty-eight University Avenue. All are point one eight-five acre lots uh with access to sixty-third street. And so those, to the background on this, those three parcels were acquired by the Windsor Presbyterian Church um, and have had previously existing single, single-family homes on them. Um, currently, the parcels are going through the process of combining and or creating a lot tie agreement to allow for development across those parcels. That's necessary um to have all those parcels combined and connected to develop the off-street parking um, as that is not a permitted use outright as a primary structure on those parcels. So we can go to the next slide. Um, and the summary of the proposed project um is to remain a civic organization use um, to add forty-seven additional parking stalls, three of those being ADA compliant, uh, six combined, short-term, long-term uh bike parking stalls, a right-in, right-out access on to sixty-third, moving from the three accesses to one, uh, two landscaped islands and a ten-foot landscape buffer on the north and west side of the property. The next slide you'll see is the proposed uh dimension plan sheet. And then we'll go to the land use compatibility and zoning requirements. Um, so talking about zoning and use uh to the north uh is the R-three district, the multifamily residential. Uh, single-family residential resides there as a use uh to the south is the urban center uh district residential multifamily uh use uh to the east is outside of city limits, technically considered commercial. And then to the west, urban center uh district, also uh residential, single-family. And then we have the urban center um lot area lot width and then uh lot standards. So when it comes to the comprehensive plan, um, with the, looking at the future land use map, um, this area is designated as civic use. Um, and the twenty-seventeen comprehensive plan identifies the civic use uh as these areas include religious buildings, public facilities, schools and other public and semi-public uses, um, increasing this use follows the comprehensive plan. Um, looking more specifically at the future land use map, it identifies that area, if you want to go to the next slide. It identifies that area, a little bit difficult to see, but at bottom, right? Going to the zoning, um, the Windsor Presbyterian Church is in the urban center district um along university. Um, the other three properties are in the R-three uh district and will have to uh create that lot tie or combine um being, coming a part of the U C district um, and then allowing for that one use. Um, and then within the urban center district, um, this district recognizes the uh mixed-use character primarily along University Avenue corridor, which is the primary principle route through uh central Windsor Heights. District contains combination of residential, commercial, office uses and is known for its walkability, main street feel. Uh, and the civic organization's use is permitted by right within this district. When it comes to traffic information, um, there wasn't a traffic study requir- uh requested by the city. Uh, the number of access points on sixty-third actually decreases and the applicant went through the process to get um the Iowa D O T to sign off and release an entrance permit for the proposed right-in, right-out uh driveway. Uh, going to parkland dedication, um, there was none uh required, although the U C district does if there's any form of residential that is increased. Uh, for landscaping and planting, um, they show on sheet uh seven of nine, um, which was recently updated to show that they are required to have uh seven trees with the increase in, in pervious surface that, that is placed and then thirty-five shrubs. So that's one per two thousand square feet of trees that, and then five for two thousand square feet pervious area for shrubs. Um, they show thirty-four trees in total and then forty-four shrubs, uh, meeting all the landscaping requirements and planting requirements uh set forth by our code. And this is the um landscaping plan sheet um that was received and updated today after discussion with the north property owner. Um, and I will get to that shortly. Building facade, although there are building facade requirements in the U C district, uh, the building has, did not change in the process of uh this proposed project. So um, no facade requirements were levied uh on this project and so uh city staff took no further action on that. Uh, when it comes to stormwater drainage, um, they provided stormwater management plan um and the updates they had to the stormwater stormwater utilities um and detention done below, um, met all the criteria for um our, our current code. And then the proposed stormwater sheet that appears here. And then going to screenings and bufferings, uh, with the U C district, um, it is required to have a ten-foot opaque buffer uh in screening when abutting a less intensive zoning districts such as, such as R-one, R-two or R-three. Um, it abuts R-three on the north and west side uh of the property. Um, the applicant applied the screening to the property, um, being a lands, entirely landscape buffer on both sides um, and also partially using a retaining wall on the west side uh to help with that, um, meeting that ten-foot setback and also the uh minimum six foot, six foot high opaque buffer. And then landscaping and screening, the landscaping plan sheet again to show that. And then this is the, this is that retaining wall that I just spoke of. Um, and then moving to the lighting as well, um, with our lighting requirements uh within the lighting code, having less than one foot candle that spreads to adjoining properties and then also making sure that the area is properly lit throughout um for use is incredibly important and through their lighting plan that'll be shown next, um, they meet all the criteria and also uh show less than point five uh foot candles as a measurement uh for lighting on the uh properties to the north and to the west. And it's very difficult to see on that, but it well meets the criteria. And then going to uh public comment, um, there was a public hearing for planning and zoning commission meeting on October twenty-third, twenty-two-four. Uh, there were three members of the public that spoke about the project um and the con- some concerns that were raised. There was a concern of lack of communication between developers slash church and neighboring properties uh on the project. Concerns on lighting of the parking lot not being necessarily enough uh and allowing non-lit gatherings uh as a gathering space, um, and concerns on lighting being too bright on the edge of the parking lot um, for neighboring properties and also um the required landscape buffer yard to the north being uh deciduous trees and dropping leaves and those leaves being blown onto the property and having to be handled and maintained by that property owner. Um, discussion was had on each of these items um by either the applicant or city staff. Um, and um, all of the discussion, all these discussion uh hit all the main points for one, two and three. Um, and addressed uh everything from the public. Um, for point four, um, the planning and zoning commission asked in good faith um of the applicant to work with the property owner to the north to uh make sure that some agreement uh could be, could be made for the landscaping buffer to make sure that um the plantings in place wouldn't cause uh any unnecessary maintenance to the property to the north. So um, city staff, uh, the proposed use at this location um is permitted by right by the current zoning district, follows all of our zoning district requirements and is compliant with the future land use map, comprehensive plan for the city. Our, the city staff recommendation, after review documentation recommends that the city council approve uh with the conditions laid out by city staff uh, the site plan for sixty-three oh one University Avenue uh Windsor Presbyterian Church parking lot to the city council and then have the uh recommended motion. Uh, moving to the P and Z recommendation, um, the exact same after holding a public hearing and listening to public input uh and receiving uh city staff's recommendation recommends that the city council approve with conditions laid out by city staff uh, the site plan for sixty-three oh one University Avenue um with the inclusion of uh the good faith asked of the applicant to discuss with the northern uh property owner about the landscaping buffer. We, the updated landscaping plan that you did receive um was after discussion uh that the applicant had um with the, with the northern property owner um to change the plantings to lessen, lessen any leaves that could possibly go into her yard for maintenance. And then the sa- the same recommended motion. And then we have conditions of approval, or, yeah, conditions of approval are general ones that are on a part of every single uh site plan that we have. And then some additional ones from engineering to make sure they provide all the security bonds um and maintenance performance agreements, um, and then also uh the planning comment to make sure that they develop a lot tie agreement or combine those parcels to make sure that it's all one contiguous area and it's one primary use on the entire property. And that is it. So, do you have any questions for me?
Um, I had a question about the uh sixty-third street that they'll still have the, um, sorry, the, they'll still have an exit on university that's right turn only.
Yes.
And then one.
One off.
Entrance on sixty-third.
On sixty-third, that is also right-in, right-out.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Will they close the one entrance that, because they have like the, the entrance on sixty-third, then the entrance on university and then they'll have the entrances here in the big parking lot? Is that how that works or will one of them be removed or?
The one on sixty-third be removed and then those, those three driveways that exist currently will also be uh a part of the parking lot, so it'll be a single entrance on sixty-third street that is right-in, right-out.
The questions about the lighting come from the adjacent property owners, too?
Yes, they did. Yep, and we discussed during the uh planning and zoning commission meeting and they understood after I, I walked through it. Um, but it would be minimal, like maybe feet of light going onto their property um from what's shown.
Will the lighting be on continuously or will it be kind of shut off between ten AM and, or ten PM and five AM? Or is it kind of on a timer or is it, will it continuously be on?
Uh, that was a discussion point between the northern property owner and the applicant and I can, like, you discuss to that. Because I guess it's much more on the church on when you would like to, but we don't necessarily. It, it can be on all the time, but I wouldn't think it would, so.
I just didn't know if like, you know, one of the businesses that people had problems or had concerns with the lighting, they would go off at a certain set time, so I didn't know if this was.
It could be, but uh, again, the lighting that would go onto the property that you could see would be very, very minimal, especially with the landscaping that would be, you, you probably wouldn't be able to see the light anyways, so.
Uh, other questions for Trey? Any questions for the applicant or any comments from the applicant?
Well, the fence that's currently there on the north side that kind of tipped over a little bit and uh, is
tipped over a little bit and uh, is that going to be taken down or is that gonna be up like that and then the the buffer is gonna be the trees or?
I believe that's removed.
Fence on the north side, if there's anything on the north side between us and our neighbors, it's not real, vertical disappeared during construction. Um, we do have existing fences.
Will you, will you come up here? I'm sorry. Go into the microphone. I apologize.
Yeah.
Shane Devick, C E C located at twenty-four hundred eighty-sixth street in Urbendale. Um, so you were discussing a fence and I think what you're seeing on the north side is a remnants of a fence that is yet to be taken down. On our west side, we, there are existing fences that are on our neighbors, so, and those will stay. Uh, and I have read the conditions of approval and we are in agreement with those.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I know at one point in time that the neighbor to the west was concerned about um, having people able to see into the backyards when previously it wasn't, there was a house there. Um, has this been worked out? Will that, I know that there's a big, huge difference between sixty-fourth street and sixty-third street, which I didn't really notice until all those houses came down. Who knew? Um, will, will there be kind of some blockage there with the the retaining wall and the whatever? Trees, for lack of a better term?
Right, just to describe what occurs between us and the neighbors to our west. You're right, there's a grade change which goes up. So we're here and their properties are there. And then two of them do have retaining or fences going up beyond that. Besides that, we'll be planting everything that we're showing. Um, so between all of that, I really feel like we're, we've accomplished what we need to.
Other questions? Any public comment? Any discussion amongst council?
I will say that when I drive past uh, this church and services are starting or or getting out or there's a funeral or um, I think there's a couple other groups that rent the space from the church. Um, I've never experienced uh, any um, challenges from people pulling out from there. Um, I've seen some road rage living on sixty-third street. I've committed some road rage living on sixty-third street. And um, I haven't, I actually, I'm really impressed uh, that the church has done as well with this limited space since the sale of their other property that they used for parking as well. So um, I I would look forward to more of the same from, from this new design.
Further comments?
This should be much better rather than crossing university where you used to park. And um, be right next to the church. So, but very supportive. Good idea.
All right, roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Horns?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item seven. Ms. Horns.
So Windsor Wonderland is well underway and so we've been uh, working uh, uh, very busily, Santa's elves and are very busy right now with Windsor Wonderland. So just thanks to Adam uh, for getting the newsletter piece pulled together and the uh, social media posts and thanks to Susan and Lauren for all their additional help and support and pulling all the um, administrative kind of pieces together and the rest of the team for what they've been doing to to kind of pull. But um, we have a a full onslaught of um, activities ready to go. Um, please remember to um, hopefully, well, by the end of the week, we'll have the volunteer sign up. So make sure you can um, so make sure you get uh, signed up for that and then um, uh, otherwise just share out and like on face, social media outlets and all of those sorts of things. So um, looking forward to another great event, so. Beggars Night was super fun, by the way. It was a beautiful night. We had great weather. That's all I got. Great night.
Other communities didn't have such great weather.
They did not.
Should have had hindsight.
Uh, I echo Teresa's uh, um, excitement for Windsor Wonderland. It's gonna be great. Lots of um, really fun things that uh, it's become another tradition here. So uh, tomorrow's the next regular DART meeting. It's not a work session. It is just uh, the regular monthly meeting. Um, and as Amanda said, it is um, a really important time for DART and I'm really proud to be among the cities that uh, are fully funding DART. Um, we are at our max levy and we also pay in addition to that and we know that for every dollar we invest in transit, um, the Bureau of Labor Statistics says we get four dollars back in return and we see that here in Windsor Heights between Hy-Vee and Walmart and Sam's Club and um, the Apple Valley Shopping Areas and Aldi. So um, tomorrow will be a great conversation, I'm sure. And then also a reminder that tomorrow's election day polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. And if you are turned away at the polls, perhaps your voter registration was purged. You are legally entitled to a provisional ballot. So tell your friends, tell your family members. That's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, not much of a report. I wanted to thank Adam for uh, meeting with me earlier this morning. Also, uh, I'm I'm interested to find out what Blue Aguave will be like. So uh, we we peeked in the window uh, today. Looks like they're, they have a four-month lease, was that right? They're subleasing from.
Subleasing from Little Brother, which I think was a limited.
Yeah.
Pretty limited duration.
Will be interesting to see. Um, that's all I have.
No, nothing for me. Eric?
Um, just, um, let's see. We had a special events committee meeting two weeks ago, a week ago. I don't even know when, but on a Friday. Where we uh, updated those in attendance over the next few events that we're planning. Plus also coming up on the twenty-twenty-five, coming up with the twenty-twenty-five uh, special events calendar. Uh, thank you to Nate for blocking off the dates for not just twenty-twenty-five, but um, looking ahead. Um, I also had him block off uh, the dates in advance for twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven to make sure that we don't have any conflicts uh, which we tend to always run into. So uh, trick or treat was a success. Uh, I think it went better than than last year. Um, there was a a lot less car traffic, which is probably because it was a nicer night. Uh, but it was great to see all of the, the ghouls, goblins and creative costumes that came out. Uh, we had over two hundred and thirty-five kids, so it was quite a success. I also heard from some um, mowing customers that they actually had friends come over to hand out candy because they don't normally do it. Uh, but they did it as a group together and kind of had a little party and they enjoyed every minute of it. So uh, to have seventy and eighty-year-olds excited to hand out candy, it was kind of fun to hear. So um, then uh, I have a um, meeting, a Metro Waste Executive Board meeting on Wednesday. A catch-de-moyne meeting on Thursday, as well as a business pop-in for the chamber on Thursday. And then I've been busy planning the Veterans Day luncheon. As of two PM, we had over sixty people that RSVP'd for the luncheon. Thank you to everyone who has volunteered to help at the event, to set up as well as cleaning up after the luncheon. A big thank you to all the businesses that donated gift cards to the Veterans Day raffle. We're still accepting gift cards or donations if you have uh, anything that you would like to donate. And if you're writing a letter to be included in the Veterans Day uh, packets, please have them to me as soon as possible so that I don't have to spend my weekend putting the packets together. And then um, thank you to Joseph and Lauren and Mayor Jones for being our voices as DART goes through uh, this process and all the drama that has been surrounding it lately. So um, I know, I appreciate and I think the rest of us appreciate all the time that you've dedicated to uh, DART these last few months, year. So appreciate it. That's it.
All right. Item eight. Closed session. For Iowa Code twenty-one, five, one, subj, to discuss the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure would could be reasonably expected to increase the price. The governmental body would have to pay for that property, the minutes and the tape recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Motion? Roll call.
Susan Sears?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Horns?
Yes.